Call the regular City Commission meeting of Tuesday, February 12, 2013 to order. May we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we take roll?
Commissioner Bushy?
Here.
Commissioner Crisier?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Rubino?
Here.
Mayor Costelli?
Here. Next item is consideration of the following minutes. Regular City Commission meeting held Tuesday, January 8, 2013. Public hearing, special City Commission meeting held Thursday, January 10, 2013. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move the minutes for the regular City Commission meeting held Tuesday, January 8, 2013, in the public hearing, and special City Commission meeting held Thursday, January 10, 2013, be approved and recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
Questions, comments? May we take a vote?
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisier?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is the January 2013 dispersment report. Amy.
Payroll on accounts payable for the month of January was provided to all of you prior to the meeting. Payroll for the month was $62,807.63. Accounts payable was $673,345.85, of which $398,224.25 were in tax liabilities.
Are there any questions as to the dispersment report? Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the January dispersment report be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisier?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. I was given a note before the meeting, now I've been giving another note that says I really meant it when I gave you the first note. We have an add-on to the agenda number 4A. Heather Carmona is here from the Woodward Avenue Action Association.
I'm an add-on.
Right here, you're an official one.
Official, I get the podium. Thank you, Mayor Costelli.
I thought you were going to be governmental reports, so that's my issue.
No, no. Actually, this was came to, I was invited here tonight by Assistant City Manager Scott Petersak. I was remiss in realizing that we honored, and I should have brought to your attention, but I'm so glad to see that Scott reads our e-newsletter. In December, at our December 12 Board of Directors meeting with the Woodward Avenue Action Association, we do annual awards of board members, and we've decided the last few years to kind of take a lighthearted approach to it a little bit amongst our board members. So, we chose and selected Ann Perry, Commissioner Perry, this year for an award. Unfortunately, she wasn't at the meeting, so I kind of forgot until Scott emailed me, but I'm appreciative of the opportunity to present it to her in representing the City of Pleasant Ridge. And the award officially, we've bantered around back and forth about a lot of different awards. Ann, as you know, when she stepped back in representing the City of Pleasant Ridge, she sort of stepped into a couple of different committees very actively. But we thought what was most representative of her and really the City of Pleasant Ridge is we called her the Comeback Kid, in advocating for the city to be back in the WA3, which we're grateful, thankful for. So, on behalf of the city, or the Woodward Avenue Action Association, the city, we are presenting Commissioner Perry with the Comeback Kid Award, recognition for her leadership and her commitment to the Woodward Avenue Action Association. So, thank you, Sherri, and thank you to Scott for bringing it to our attention for the formal recognition. So, we will formally present that, or I will formally present that to you.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you very much. Well, I'll tell you, being on the, all of these different committees and that group, it is, it's a stunning group of people, and it is, there are so many exciting projects, everything from, they'll hear, we'll all hear a little later about the transit and the complete streets, but, you know, trying to really work to restore the Woodward, the Highland Park Model T plant, and all these other projects, to really, you know, embrace Woodward, which is such an important corridor to all of us. So, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations. It's appropriate that the Comeback Kid didn't come to me.
I know. It was the holidays. I'd been up till five in the morning packaging cookies, and I overslept. I'm like, ah!
Next item is the consent agenda. Sherri.
Mayor, there are two items on the consent agenda this evening. One is a resolution in honor of President's Day, Monday, February 18, and the other is a proclamation recognizing February as Black History Month. My recommendation is that the consent agenda be approved.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move the consent agenda be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisier?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is City Commission Liaison Report, starting with the Commissioner of everything else, Commissioner Perry.
So, it was a busy month. The schools, I was, Sunday night, I was at the Ferndale PTA Founder's Dinner, which it was, you know, it, the dinner gave Ferndale Schools the opportunity to recognize and celebrate the wonderful parents, the community members, and the businesses who donate their time, efforts, and goods to make these schools a success. And it makes a huge difference, you know, with all the budget cuts we see all the time to our schools. These PTA members are just incredible, and the community, you know, the businesses and everyone that come together too. It was an incredible group of people, as I saw, as they were supporting the district, but also, the Pleasant Ridge PTA members are really quite an impressive lot. Amy Butters was going to try and be here, but she has a budget meeting tonight, and there, but she sent me a couple notes. One of the things we were talking about was, at the last school board meeting, there were some news that was not very good, and, you know, it's been in the papers and stuff. They ended up coming up with a $3.5 million budget shortage, and a lot of that has to do with, it's mostly due to a lower-than-expected enrollment, and it's mostly from the Digital Learning Center, from this new digital high school program that was installed over the summer. This new school board has worked very hard to try and figure out what some good solutions are, you know, this has been a problem that's been a long time, that, you know, unfortunately, we anticipated a little bit coming. They had to lay off three of the Digital Learning Center case managers, the teachers. Two clerical positions are being left open, and then they're dipping into the rainy day fund, into their fund balance, to help pull that budget together.
Gary, can I interrupt?
Yes.
Is that the budget for the current year ongoing, or for the year that might start?
It was in a budget that was approved in last summer, so I think around July or August.
Okay. So, it's the current budget?
Yes.
Okay.
So, the board members have discussed with Gary about preliminary, an analysis of next year's budget, to assure they don't find themselves in that situation next year. And one of the very important things they're doing, which I know you've seen, and, you know, the city wants to get involved in, is their strategic planning efforts. Karen Toomey and Kevin Deegan Kraus are both on this new strategic planning committee, which is not something that they've done before, the school system. And so, I think, you know, they, they're working with Charles Fleedom of Project Innovations, and it will have focus groups with lots of different, you know, specific, you know, pulling the cities in, pulling residents, and pulling in parents who have children that they've decided to go to other schools and stuff too, to really strategically try and solve some of these issues with the school. So, there are some great articles out there, and I know Amy Butters or any of the school board would be happy to answer any questions. Just send me an email at aperry@cityofpleasantridge.org, and I will get your, any questions forwarded on to them. Some better news is, the varsity girls' basketball team is writing an undefeated OAA league record with its win over the Royal Oak on Tuesday, clinching a championship. And congratulations to the Berkeley-Ferndale Unified Boys Hockey Team. They won their game on Saturday against West Bloomfield, six to zero, including second straight OAA White Division title. And then, the next school board meeting where they will be discussing meet scores is on February 25. And Sound of Music is coming up, March 16 through the 24th. And you can get tickets at ferndaletheater.org. Turning to the WA3 and transit, and Heather may actually be able to give some even better, more in-depth information, but looking at what the summaries that we just got from SEMCOG is, they were talking about the purpose and need statement is being drafted for the transit system up Woodward. The alternatives analysis of the different types of what, what the mode of transit would be, you know, if it's light rail, if it's bus rapid transit, if it stays the traditional bus. That recommendation is coming forward soon. Secretary Ray LaHood was in town and announced that he is giving the RTA $6.5 million to start alternates analysis, NELSI, or whatever, on other, the other corridors. Because this one has been such a success, and, I mean, the work that Heather and SEMCOG and all these folks have done has just really helped bring this forward. So, it's exciting, because they're going to be studying transit, mass transit on M-59, is it Michigan Avenue?
Greshit.
And Greshit. And is there one more, or no?
Triangle. Okay, no, that's it.
Okay.
Triangle and Collin.
And then, there are, he also announced that the M-1, which is going to be the light rail that will go from East Grand Boulevard, from Grand Boulevard, all the way down to the river, is going to receive $25 million from the Federal Transit Authority. We're also preparing for the next round of public meetings, which I'll keep you updated on, because those meetings are really interesting, the input, and these guys can answer questions just so beautifully, because they have thought of all of, all of the issues. And then, the next Alternatives Analysis Committee meeting is February 19, at the Berkeley Public Safety Building. And then, Complete Streets is working too. We're going to have a meeting here for Complete Streets. We are planning charrettes, which are going to be a three-day public outreach, charrettes. And these, so, okay, so what it is, along Woodward Avenue, they're dividing it into five different sections, and in each section, they will have a three-day seminar discussing, you know, and they're not all-day seminars, but three-day seminar discussing questions and concerns, and really looking at the specific areas. And we're working hard, I think they're open to doing one here in Pleasant Ridge, so that we can really address 696 and Woodward, which would be a beautiful, long, hard study. So, I'll keep you updated on all of that. One of the days, they actually go out and walk the whole thing. So, they try and cross Woodward and get up to, or 696, and get to the zoo, or to Holiday Market. And then, yeah, those will happen sometime between April and June, so I'll keep you updated. Thank you.
Back to the schools on the shortfall of enrollment.
Yes.
Do you know percentage-wise, how much was the digital school as opposed to the regular?
Oh, it's a huge amount. It's like, oh, I used to really know this. It was 449 students.
Yeah, I remember, roughly 450 total.
I'm pretty sure that the digital high school is a third of, a half to a third of the school's population. I used to know that. I will let you know.
Okay.
Because, yeah.
And that, and that's a, is this the first year or second year of digital high school?
Oh, it's the first year. They developed it over the summer, in about, yeah, in a very brief amount of time, the whole project was developed. And so, it's hard, because those are the, it's a great program. Digital learning centers are a really important new way for school system, things for school systems to embrace, but you start them with, and this is what this group would like to do, is start it with a much smaller focus group, test group, pilot group, that's it, and then grow it. Because it's hard to try and have, you know, 800 to 1,000 students in a brand-new program. That's a very different type of educational system.
And was that designed to reach out to the students within the district, or the students within the county, or the students throughout the entire state? Do you, do you know?
Yep. It was replacing the digital, I mean, it was replacing the alternative education school, which was a big part, and that draws a lot from outside of our district. And so, that is one of this efforts that I know the school board wants to shift the focus on, really reaching out to our communities. And that's a bunch of the strategic planning, because you're not going to have drastic problems and shifts and downfalls in numbers, you know, reductions in numbers, if you are serving your communities. And I know that's something they'd really like to shift the focus back to.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to have one question.
Go ahead, please.
I think that's one of the complaints that you and I talked about in the beginning, when they were trying to start this alternative program without doing a pilot program, and they were going headfirst, and we had talked about that they were gonna, that is such a big cost item for them to do this without any kind of study.
Right.
It was ridiculous.
Right. And, yeah, Southfield started a similar program, and what they did was, they started it with, I think it, honestly, it may have even been less than 10 students, then the next year they did 25, and then they ramped it up to 100.
Which is the way you're supposed to do it.
Right. Because it is, it's a brand-new way of teaching, and we were also not even taking some package that had been successful somewhere else, and putting it into the school system. We were creating, rebuilding the wheel. So, I'm excited that we have new eyes on this, so that...
I'm glad.
Yeah.
Historical Commission, Commissioner Rubino.
Okay, the historical commission met last week, and we talked about the home tour that's going to take place in sometime in June, I believe it is. And we're looking forward to that. We're looking for homes, and if you're interested, please contact our chairperson, or contact the city and let us know, and we'd be more than happy to use your home, your yard, or whatever you have that we can go look at. So, it's about all this going on, and we are planning to have our antique sale again sometime in September, and you'll have more information as time goes on. There's a couple other things we talked about, but they're up in the air yet, and we haven't made any final decisions. Hopefully, in the next two months, we can bring them to you. That's it.
Planning Commission DDA, Commissioner Bushy.
We had our early elections. Chairman Glazow was re-elected as chairman, Greg Sweeney as vice-chairman, and as secretary would be Dave Leal. They also set their concert in the park dates. The family-oriented one will be a 7:31, and the adult-oriented concert in the park will be 9:18. Also, they are still waiting to get the final information on the mediums. They're working still with DDT on the lighting, and Amtrak on some other issues, and also, they are focusing, trying to focus on the alleys on the south end, on the east side. So, and also, we are looking forward to, with a joint, another joint workshop with the City Commission and the Planning Commission DDA, I don't have the...
It's the 21st.
The 21st.
Yes.
And hopefully, we'll have a new goals and objectives for the community at that time.
Is that February 21st?
Yes.
Yes.
Will Eiko Angeli be able to make this one?
Yes.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Jerry, what, do, can you guys speak to the plans for the median for the cross, are you talking about the crossing at Sylvan and Oakland Park Boulevard?
Yes.
Do, can you talk about the plan or not yet?
Yes. No, no, no. It's actually been talked about for about a year. There was some momentum, and then, you know, due to funding issues, a lot of that just died away, and then, there's a renewed effort to make some improvements at the intersection at the Woodwards-Sylvan-Oakland Park. And the DDA's goal is to make it more visible, to make it, make people realize that you are actually in the middle of a city, and ultimately, to make it safer for pedestrians to cross. Some of the ideas, there's no plan, so to speak, a blueprint kind of plan, but the idea is, one of them was the countdown
Lights.
light that was installed by MDOT. And that was a result of the city meeting with them then, and asking them to move us up on their schedule, and so they were able to do that. Another, one of the other things that we've requested of MDOT is their hash marks for the crossing, so that it's more visible. We looked into a lighted crossing, and that's not going to happen, MDOT said, but they were...
Lighted in the sense of lights coming up from the pavement?
It's actually, they're embedded in the pavement, so when a pedestrian's crossing, those lights are on. They are installed in some, on some, in some areas that are less traveled, not quite a busy corridor like Woodward. But they were receptive to the idea of the painting and markings. So, that's something that I think will be done soon. The holdup seems to be with DTE, because one of the things that the DDA wants to do is some additional lighting with a better, it's a dark corner. I mean, they did a field trip out there a couple of times in the evening hours, and we definitely need a better lighted pathway. So, DTE has provided us one estimate for about $75,000, and we asked them to go back and look at some other lamp heads, and to take a look at the candlelight that hits the ground. We're waiting to hear from them again, and it seems like every time we talk to them or meet with them, they've been great to work with, but you wait about two months in between each visit. So, that's what we're waiting on. The DDA is waiting just, I think, for that component, and if that happens, then the next part would be, if they're able to have the countdown light, the hash marks, better lighting, then the DDA is going to go further with that, with additional lights on Woodward, and additional landscaping, so that it actually looks like an intersection that's somewhat, hopefully, more safe to cross.
Have they indicated any receptiveness to reducing the speed limit?
No.
Which is something we were fighting for for years, until they told us, oh, shut up.
No, but all of this, it's interesting, because the timing is better now, because of the Complete Streets effort that, that is underway, and, you know, making Woodward Avenue more convenient for pedestrians, and bikes, and rapid transit, and vehicles, I think the speed limit is something that MDOT is going to have to address.
Sherri, can I just address the comment?
Yes.
I don't know if it's appropriate in the form of... Yeah, I think Sherri just mentioned, as part of the Complete Streets effort, the idea of collectively looking at where the ideal locate, what the city desires at different locations, is where we can advocate for you.
Right.
So, having an awareness of what you desire is part of that plan's important, because as Commissioner Perry said, at the last meeting we had with the Complete Streets Steering Group, which is a pretty large group, we literally laid out a GIS map of the entire corridor, had representatives from Detroit to Pontiac laying out where they know of existing plans that are happening along Woodward, and then where there are desired plans for crosswalks and enhancements like that, and in any other, any other things that the city would desire. So, if the city desires, say, we'd really like to see a reduced speed limit, they're marking up, it doesn't mean that just because you're marking on the map it's going to happen, but what Parsons Brinkerhop is doing is then looking at that as a whole and saying, okay, how do we, based on various criteria, look at where we can make Woodward more of a complete street? So, there's no guarantee
Right.
that that will come out of this. But one of the things that was primary, I think, observation of most communities was speed limit, potential road diet, which is, can be interpreted in a lot of different ways. It could be a lane reduction and/or speed limit, depending on the traffic engineer you talk to. But those are major factors that are being discussed right now in Complete Streets. So, any knowledge that you have, even of just concepts, what you just said, Sherri, Sherri, it's very important that we have that information at this time, so we can plug it in, and that we can advocate for you. When we talk about pilot projects, which is something right now that MDOT's saying, if you can define a couple areas for pilots, we could even potentially, you know, put you on the list to be funded for that. Now, again, you know, when they say that, it doesn't, you know, it means kind of first come, first served, and we've been down that road before with, with funding that we've had individually, but again, as MDOT looks, the ties are changing, they're prioritizing...
Well, Heather, as you were called, when I was the representative of WA3, I repeatedly asked MDOT to lower the speed limit.
I remember.
Because it was, what, 35 in Ferndale, and jumped here, and it could have just waited another half mile when people were past the ditch.
Right.
And the message back was, if Pleasant Ridge ever wants money for anything from the state again, quit talking about reducing the speed limit.
And I think, I think what's happened since that time here has been, one, a palatability with an, it's a different MDOT right now.
It's very different.
It's a very different, they're getting mandates from Federal Highway and the administration that they have to do, you know, that the movement for complete streets, non-motorized, pedestrian, is much different than it was five, six, seven, eight, 10 years ago. That was 10-plus years ago.
That's right.
The director of MDOT right now, and their deputy director, they're cyclists, so they're very interested in seeing what's happening in terms of cycling and non-motorized. So, I just think the level of, you know, even when we did our non-motorized plan years ago, and the city said it didn't do anything with that, it's because you're absolutely right, there was this resistance that we were, you know, you can develop a plan, but unless it's embraced by MDOT, it's not going anywhere. And the nice thing is, MDOT's part of this plan. They provided the match on the grant, and one of their chief administrators, two or three actually come to the committee meetings and sit there, and give feedback, and say, we want this to be successful, we don't want it to just be a plan that's going to sit. So, I'm pretty confident that we're going to see things that are going to come out of this effort that are going to be, you know, markable difference than what we've seen in the past, so. And again, let us advocate for you, because it's one thing the city goes to MDOT, oh, you're just one city out of all the dozens we have in the state, but if we have a collective group that says, look, wait a minute, no, 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 we want to see this on Woodward, there's 11 communities, listen to us. I think we have a louder, more influential voice now than we've had in the past, so.
I will, oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Bushy has a question.
Well, I have one here, to Heather. So, then what would you say our best way then to communicate this, is this by getting information to Commissioner Perry, or...
Yeah, I think the way Ann has been participating...
Heather, can you step up here? I'm sorry. There's a microphone.
Yep. And I noticed the appointment here, whether it's Mr. DeCosta or Ann continues, and what other fashion, you know, it could be emailing me your conceptual plans, and I'll make sure it's there, so it doesn't have to be in a formal sense. But I think the act of representation on the committee, which Commissioner Perry has been doing, is consistent. But anything you're thinking, again, even if it's concepts, that's something that they need to think about. So, if you're thinking about anything, that's, those are things that have to be factored into what they're going to come back with recommendations, so.
One thing I wanted to add was, it wasn't so long ago that I met with Parsons Brinkerhop people, and that's when they were developing the overlay.
Right.
And all of these ideas were shared at that time, and Mr. Eiko Angeli was at that meeting. So, they are very much aware of our concept.
They have the one that you just talked about, the median.
Oh, and probably more.
Because I don't see, you know, again, with, with 11 communities and all the different ideas, I sometimes don't, I don't see exactly everything.
Right, I'm sure. So, I know that that's at least, that was at the meeting that we had with them. The other part, the other part of that was, we have built a very strong relationship, the city has built a strong relationship with our reps at MDOT too, and we haven't been turned down for anything in a number of years, probably three years. They've always been very interested in working with us. So, that, you know, that is a change, and as Heather pointed out, it's a different MDOT. And then, finally, just in my conversations with Heather over the past month or so, getting briefed a little bit on some of the subcommittees, the committees that have been assigned under WA3, as I mentioned in my memo, Mr. Petersak's going to start attending all of those, so that we, in addition to Commissioner Perry, just so that we are, you know, at the forefront of what's going on and what may be happening on the Woodward corridor too. I think Commissioner Perry's done an excellent job reporting back to all of us, but, you know, we'll, we'll have another set of ears there that can be the liaison to the DDA and Mr. Eiko Angeli as well.
Did you add something?
Go ahead.
I, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. I, I, that was just my concern. I just, I just didn't want us to be a void area there between the Planning Commission and then what's given direct to them, okay?
Right.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. And then, well, and that is exactly why I think it's so exciting, this appointment of Mr. DeCosta, because then he'll be, he's, you know, he is a planner, so he knows how to speak all of this language, and he can communicate all of the work that the Planning Commission is doing, and DDA are doing with these folks. And when Mr. Strater came from, and met with us a couple, like a month or two ago, I mean, it was great, because they understand, we're a very, we're at a very tough intersection, and there's some special, there's, there's special attention that needs to be paid, because 696 is a huge barrier, and the, the traffic things. There's a really cool video that, that Jason from the WA3 shared, and I will share it with all of you, and we'll see if Scott can get it up on the website, just to sort of see the concept of Complete Streets, because, and this was like a perfect situation in New York that worked out. And one of the really nice things about it was, it ended up slowing down, but they, And one of the really nice things about it was it ended up slowing down, but they, because of how the lanes ended up being configured, it slightly narrowed the lanes. It didn't reduce them, but because of the narrowing, it also slows down the traffic a little bit naturally, which, but it also had great bike lanes and great walking and crossing and it's the perfect solution.
Well, one thing about MDOT that I don't think that has changed, which is a good thing, is their advocacy for spending money on our highways and our roads. And in the relationship that we've had over the years with MDOT and talking to past directors of MDOT and I've talked to several contractors who do road, who roadwork, expressway work over the years and you ask why our roads are in such lousy shape. It's because one administration after the other either wanted to shove it aside so as to not raise taxes or to go with the lowest possible bid despite what the quality might be, what the, you know, lifetime of the road might be. So I am pleased to see, you know, a governor who's willing to put it on the table to, let's try to find a way to spend money now, even though it's tough to do, to fix the roads for the long term so we don't have to keep patching them every three or four or five years or probably more frequently. So I think from the perspective of MDOT that not having changed is a good thing. Did we get through everybody? Commissioner Prizziak, recreation.
I thought you guys were going to forget about these. Very interesting conversation.
That's why I have notes.
Thank you, Mayor. And I hate to start off my report with some sad news, but Nina Miller, who was a valuable member of the Recreation Commission, passed away recently. The commission was very shocked to hear this and wanted everyone in the community to know that she was a valuable member of the Recreation Commission and that she'll be sadly missed. On a higher note, we had a commission member on the Recreation Commission who recently had a new baby, Diana Perrino, and her family welcomed a new baby and we're all excited for the new baby to start enjoying the recreation opportunities here in Pleasant Ridge. We also had our elections held. We had an outgoing chairman, Chair John Prisbala. John Prisbala was appointed to the Recreation Commission on December fourteenth, two thousand and four. His first term was a partial term that lasted for two years and he then served two full cycles before being term limited on December thirty-first, two thousand and twelve. John served the maximum eight years on the Recreation Commission. It sounds like a sentence, but it's really a very enjoyable time. Eight years, he did a lot of good work over the years. He took over as chairman of the commission in two thousand and eleven. He's a great, he was a great member of that commission and he's still a great member of this community. And on behalf of the Recreation Commission, we want to thank John and let him know that he'll be missed.
You know, he's eligible for reappointment in a year.
Yay!
Maybe we'll have him back in a year. As part of the changing of the guard there, Jaclyn Scully was elected the new chair of the Recreation Commission to succeed John. And Jay Foreman was elected secretary. So we are happy, they're two very hardworking individuals and very dedicated to the Recreation Commission. So we're excited about their leadership. Our appraisal fair is coming up. It's scheduled for April sixth, two thousand and thirteen, from ten to two P.M. It'll be held at the Community Center. And for those of you who remember last year, it's a Antiques Roadshow type event. We're actually looking for renaming the event or putting a name on the event. So if you have any suggestions, you can email them to recreation@cityofpleasantridge.org and maybe your name will be the name we pick for the title of this, what we hope to be a yearly event. Another event that we held recently was the Health and Wellness Fair. It was on January twelfth at the Community Center. We had over seventy participants that day. People were enrolled in classes that spanned a lot of different topics on wellness and learning. Everyone had a great time and we were able to raise around six hundred dollars for the Playmakers Playground Improvements. We had many members of the Recreation Commission who volunteered their time. Amanda and Christine and Bridget helped out with babysitting and Marika was a very valuable volunteer that day and everybody worked really hard. And Ms. Scully, who worked really hard to organize the event and put on the event, shared a little story that day that kind of made us all feel it was worthwhile. We had a little girl who approached Jaclyn after she had enjoyed her class and she actually told Jaclyn it was the best day of her life.
Aww.
It's a mighty fine endorsement.
Yay!
As part of the ongoing fundraising for Playmakers, we are still selling these I Love PR window clings. You can get them at the Recreation Center. Make sure you get those on your car or windows. And finally, Recreation Director Scott Peterzak wanted us to talk, to announce that the Pleasant Ridge eBlast is now live. The City of Pleasant Ridge is excited about the arrival of the electronic eBlast. This will be monthly newsletters and on-demand information, which will be sent out electronically to those who join this list. The newsletter will include upcoming programs and events, city news, announcements, and friendly reminders. To sign up for this, please visit the website at cityofpleasantridge.org and enter your name and email address into the database. This will be in addition to the Ridger, which will still come out quarterly. It's just a way to take advantage of the technology to spread the information on the Recreation Commission throughout the community. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
I have a quick question about eBlasts.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Scott, would we be able to put like the agendas for the meetings and stuff out there on eBlasts?
Right now, we're still working on some of the bugs and the limitations of the program. The agendas and the minutes are up on the website right now, so I...
I don't, I think it's going to be more of a newsletter format.
Okay.
And I think we'll leave the website for business items, if you will.
Okay.
People can pull the business items as opposed to having it pushed to them.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Would we be able to put out reminders of the meetings? I mean, because that's the thing, I mean, people have so many busy things in their lives and that's one of the real benefits of an eBlast is just trying to get, you know, because people have questions and concerns we all hear about all the time. And so it's nice for them to sort of know.
And I don't think it would hurt to put it in the newsletter. The one thing that I do want to be careful about is like bombarding people with three or four emails a week because then they'll just start to.
Sure.
Click the not read button. So I don't think it would be bad to put a little section in the newsletter saying, "These are the upcoming meetings for the month of, you know, State Mission Rec and..."
Right, like they're in the printed version already. That's not a problem.
That's great, thank you.
Scott, are you planning a change in the publication dates of the Ridger?
We have started that right now with this newsletter that's out right now. It used to be November, December, and January, and then the next one would be February, March, April, and then the next one was the next three months. So it was hurting our summer schedule because the summer, the summer schedule was coming out in June and all of our June programs are starting like June fifteenth. So people didn't have time to be able to plan their summer things. We would always get calls, "What's going on with camp? What are the field trips? I need to be able to plan what other camps we're doing." So we pushed it so it's more on a calendar year now, so it'll be January, February, March, April, May, June. So all the summer information will come out in April. People will have three months to, or two months to be able to prepare for mid-June once school lets out. And that way we'll have pool information, we'll have swim team information, we'll have community garden information, we'll have camp information coming out in April to everybody. So it works out to have it on the calendar year instead of kind of break over that to January carryover.
Thank you. Anything else on liaison reports? Governmental reports? Who's phone's going?
It's mine, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Jeremy McGillver, your founding commissioner. I just wanted to goodbye and give you a few items that, things that are offered with Oakland County. First is free radon testing kits through the Health Department. If you have any suspicion that you may have that in your home or around your home, you can get those test kits by calling two-four-eight-four-two-four-seven-one-nine-zero and they will let you know where you can come to pick them up. Also, there's a new program that's available for folks who may be delinquent in their property taxes with the county and you can get up to thirty thousand dollars to help you pay those delinquent taxes so that no one will lose their home to a tax sale. So that's available by calling Oakland County Treasurer Andy Meisner's office and he'll help you fill out the necessary applications.
Is that some form of low-interest loan or what is the nature of that?
I believe it's a low-interest loan kind of, to pay it back or, it's just a way to try to keep the homes in the homeowner's hands as opposed to...
But it's not a grant.
As I understand it, no.
Okay.
County still has flu shots available. The cost is sixteen dollars and you can get them both at the South Health Department at Catawba and Greenfield as well as up in Pontiac or Waterford. Sixteen dollars apiece and they say that you could, you should still get them up through March, so. Oakland Livingston Human Services Agency, of which I'm on the board, is holding a Walk for Warmth on February twenty-third at eight A.M. at Great Lakes Crossing. That's our effort to try to raise money to help folks that might not be able to pay their heating bills throughout the winter. Last year, we raised a hundred and eighty thousand. We're hoping to raise two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand this year is our goal. The county also has summer jobs available for college kids and high school kids. The problem is, is there's a really short period when you can apply for them. And I think, Sherry, did you get something from?
I usually do. I haven't received any.
Okay, I've got a copy of one here for you. Several different job openings anywhere from summer clerical to working with Parks and Rec to the nature centers or whatever. And they're good part-time jobs for kids. So the problem is, is you have to apply no later than February twenty-fifth. So that's just around the corner.
Well, I haven't received it, no.
It's just around the corner. I just got it myself two days ago. So, I mean, that's why I was wondering if you had gotten one of them. So if anyone's interested in summer jobs with the county, that's available. And the last thing I wanted to mention is the Red Oaks Nature Center, which is over on thirteen miles between John and Art DeQuinter. If you haven't been there to visit, you should. It's a fantastic place. It's now, it's been taken over last October by the county and for the last three or four years, I've done an annual spring cleanup that I've hosted and that's coming up on April twenty-eighth from nine to four. So if any of you residents would like to come over and enjoy the nature center and help us clean up at the same time, we'd appreciate it, so. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
As to the Walk for Warmth, is that at all coordinated with any of the matching programs that the utilities have so that you might make your donation and have them match it or?
I don't believe so. I mean, this is, we do get a lot of help through DTE and consumers. The ALSA Board does, but I don't believe that this is in conjunction with any of those.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Commissioner?
Yes, Commissioner McGillver.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned the Red Oaks Nature Center. Is that year-long, the open year-long, all year-long?
Yes, it's open all year long right now and that the county just took it over in October. The hours are a little bit limited till we can figure out how much we can keep it open, but I think they're open Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Sunday. I believe that's what they have at this time. It's been changing, so I'm not absolutely positive. Most of the day, we have volunteers in there as well as the county has just hired a part-time naturalist that will be working out of that building. They also do outreach programs for schools, so we can either go to the schools or the schools can come there. We have about a mile and a half walking track all the way through the woods with a beautiful nature center that's got lots of neat stuff in there for kids to see and learn about nature. Great place to, we have walkers all the time walking their dogs and riding their bikes through there. So it's kind of a nice place, over forty acres of property that's wooded and covered with brush with, we've got deer and you name it, it's in there, I think so.
Thank you. Just looking for a place to take the kids maybe on a day off or something.
That's the place, go. Give me a call and I'll be more than happy to give you a tour.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you. Other governmental reports. Public discussion items not on the agenda. Public hearing, solicitation of public comments on a proposed amendment to Chapter Forty-two, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, Article Four, offenses against public peace, Section forty-two dash eighty-four fireworks. Sherry?
Mayor, this conversation started in September of last year and that was when the city commission asked that I look into the new law that regulates and allows fireworks. For the sake of this discussion, I'm going to call them consumer fireworks, but they are anything and everything that includes those that leave the ground and spray all different color sparks and roman candles and the things that you're used to. So what was happened, what has happened is many communities have decided to adopt an ordinance and I thought this would be the best way for Pleasant Ridge to handle it as well. And it is allowed within the law. So you can regulate or adopt an ordinance regarding the ignition discharge use of these fireworks, but you cannot regulate the use of fireworks on the day preceding, the day of, or the day after any national holiday. And those holidays are spelled out in the state law. And you have that list in the memo that I provided. So the ordinance before you was introduced at last month's meeting as required and it does address the specific days when, legal holidays when fireworks would be allowed and the police would be informed of the provisions that is not problematic to use fireworks the day before, the day of, or the day after. My recommendation is that the ordinance be adopted.
Before the public hearing, a question, Sherry, in Section forty-two eighty-four as to the title of the ordinance. When we started talking about this, it was still two thousand and twelve. Now, was this intended to be two thousand and twelve fireworks ordinance because of when we started talking about it or because of two thousand and twelve being when the state statute became effective? Or should that be two thousand and thirteen now?
Well, if, in fact, I looked at that today, the reason it's in there is because that's when the statute became effective. I would recommend that we just title it fireworks ordinance.
Okay. Mr. Cooper, do you have any objection to that?
No objection.
And this is John Cooper, not Charlie Cooper. Charlie did not have a rejuvenation welcome. Charlie apparently didn't go for his flu shot. Would that, small changes to the title of the ordinance, may we open the public hearing? Anybody who wants fireworks on March thirteenth now? Close the public hearing. Next item is consideration of a proposed amendment to Chapter Forty-two, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, Article Four, offenses against public peace, Section forty-two dash eighty-four fireworks, with the suggestion that the title of the ordinance have the year two thousand and twelve stricken and simply be the fireworks ordinance. Is there a motion to adopt that ordinance with the two thousand and twelve deleted?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion. I move the ordinance four oh two regarding a proposed amendment to Chapter Forty-two, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, Article Four, offenses against public peace, Section forty-two eighty-four fireworks be approved as recommended with the change requested.
Is this for questions, comments? Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Costelli, did, what are the, what is, I'm not sure of what the right word is, but the punishment or the repercussions for breaking these?
Sherry?
Our ordinance, the penalty would be a misdemeanor and they would be issued a court appearance ticket and they would have to appear in court. I think it's punishable for up to five hundred dollars.
And up to a bazillion days in jail or maybe ninety?
Depends if I go to court or not.
Other questions?
Yes, Mayor. Does the state statute prevent us at the local... Does the state statute prevent us at the local level from adding possibly time-of-day restrictions past eleven on, say, one of these holidays or is it hands-off on all these holidays? Because could we restrict maybe on...
A timeframe?
The Fourth of July, if somebody wants to be lighting off fireworks at midnight, could we...
No.
Include in our ordinance an eleven PM?
Not on the day before, the day of, or the day after. You can't touch those things at all.
Can't do anything to restrict.
Twenty-four.
And they don't like the fact that this was actually a loophole that someone found you would be able to do. I mean, the state's purpose was to allow people to purchase fireworks because they anticipated a great amount of money would be received instead of people traveling to other areas to buy it. Now, the reports that came in after the July Fourth holiday last year, or was it the July Fourth or whenever it was, was kind of like the school district. They anticipated, I think about, you know, a half a million or something, some great dollar amount and they received about a quarter of that. So there may be some second thoughts when this is brought up, if it's ever brought up again.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering, you know, if, if we could include in our ordinance a restriction on time-of-day, but you're saying on the day of, the day preceding, and the day after, you can't make any restrictions on people's use of these fireworks.
That's correct.
They're preempting the field. They may make restrictions, but they're not leaving it to the locals.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'm aware of this ordinance because I was with a couple of communities when they did this. Just wondering if you have a permission for special occasions. For example, Eleanor Smith has her hundredth birthday and the family's throwing a big party. Can they do a small fireworks display?
She lives in Madison Heights, so.
No, she lives in, she just moved here. Is there, is there a process where they can get a special permit? No, Madison Heights and Marlowe both offer that. And I think it's a good, good idea, even if the city wants to have a Founder's Day parade and they'd like to have fireworks. Certainly you can get a permit or whatever, so I just wanted to suggest that.
There's nothing in this, but there's nothing that would prevent us from adopting this and then amending it at a later date if there's a push for that.
Just a thought.
Thank you. Other questions? May we take a vote?
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Crizziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration of the appointment of Commissioner Frank Rubino as the city's alternate representative to the Board of Directors of the Woodward Avenue Action Association known as WA Three, that's number twelve, and then number thirteen, not to be considered in tandem, but to tee them up in tandem, is consideration of the appointment of Mr. Michael DeCosta as the city's representative to the Woodward Avenue Action Association, WA Three, Complete Streets Committee and Alternative Analysis Committee. Sherri?
Mayor, this item was on the agenda last month for, to appoint an alternate. When we appointed Commissioner Perry to be the city's representative to the Board of Directors, I really just didn't think about an alternate in case Commissioner Perry couldn't attend, so as I thought about it, I recommended last month, or I volunteered to be that person in her absence, I would attend those meetings.
And the alternate could have accepted her award for her in December.
Right. In any event, my recommendation that, my recommendation was that and then Commissioner Rubino expressed an interest in attending the meetings and to be the alternate and so that was the recommendation. And then Commissioner Perry suggested that Mr. DeCosta somehow get involved and her suggestion was as the alternate. But then as I took a look at this and having conversations with Ms. Carmona, I, I agree, I think everyone agrees, it would be great to have a planning commissioner, especially one with a, who works in the field and has a background, to get involved in the complete streets and the alternative analysis projects. So tearing this all apart, which has resulted in about a five-page memo, there's two issues here. One is there's a need for an alternate of a person who would attend the Board of Directors meetings in the absence of Commissioner Perry. Now, that person can attend anytime they want as well, but that's the purpose of the alternate is just to attend those meetings. And the Board of Directors, my understanding, the Board of Directors is made up of the mayors and city managers of each community and the business representatives. And then the alternates, a couple of communities who have full-time planners or DDA directors, those are the alternates. And so it would be appropriate for any one of the suggested, Commissioner Rubino, myself, to be appointed an alternate to the Board of Directors. Aside and apart from that, and this is really where the work gets done, is the level of the committees for the alternative analysis and complete streets. Currently, they meet on separate days and times, but my understanding is that the WA Three is looking at piggybacking those meetings because often those are attended by the same people. In fact, Commissioner Perry is the one that's been attending those. And that's where I would recommend that Mr. DeCosta be appointed and, and asked to attend and be involved in those conversations. It doesn't require a formal appointment, but I did put that on the agenda this evening just because I think it, you know, it's a message to Mr. DeCosta of the importance of his attendance at these meetings.
And an endorsement.
And an endorsement. And I did have a conversation with him to make sure he understood the commitment and responsibilities and he was fine with that, so I recommend both of these appointments.
And as I understand, this is like one of the few occasions where the mayor had the ability to designate somebody and you're usurping that ability.
Yes. We all know the mayor doesn't want to go.
No, but it's the mayor or his designate.
I know. So really, you could just tell us.
So let's go to item number twelve. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move the appointment of Commissioner Frank Rubino as the city's alternate, alternate representative to the Board of Directors of the Woodward Avenue Action Association, the WA Three, be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Crizziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries.
Wonder what happened, do I say no?
I still designate you. Next item, number thirteen, consideration of the appointment of Mr. Michael DeCosta as the city's representative to the Woodward Avenue Action Association, WA Three, Complete Streets Committee and the Alternative Analysis Committee. Is that a complete list of the committees, Heather?
That helps.
Are there no other committees?
There are more committees. There are more committees, no, we just don't need, those are the two appointments that we are seeking.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Your Honor, I move the appointment of Mr. Michael DeCosta as the city's representative to the Woodward Avenue Action Association, the WA Three, Complete Streets Committee and the Alternative Analysis Committee be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Crizziak?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. They can declare winter storm emergencies, they can make appointments to WA Three.
I do have one question real quick. Are these meetings held during the day or these evenings?
During the day.
During the day, okay.
The board meetings are at eight AM?
So I mean, doesn't Mr. DeCosta work?
Yes.
Full-time job? So he takes off time?
I had a conversation with Mr. DeCosta, I think two weeks ago was it, and I had mentioned to him that he was being pushed for the position and I had heard everything except he wanted to do it and he could attend. And he told me and then he told Sherri in an email later, he wanted to do it and he could attend.
Okay, because I didn't see the same email. I have this question.
Yes, I verified.
There still was a question, okay?
Mayor Costelli, I think Mr. DeCosta has, you know, he has on go, on an ongoing basis expressed interest in larger projects along Woodward Avenue and everything that usually, some of them actually fall outside of the DDA or the Pleasant Ridge Planning Commission. So it was sort of a perfect position for him because also with the company he works for, it is, like, they do some of this work and everything, so it's sort of a perfect situation. And I do appreciate that we are officially approving his status to go to these meetings because then, you know, there are no protocol issues or questions or concerns and we can make sure that all of this information, I mean, because there's really important stuff that I worry because I'm not a planner or an architect that, you know, with this major development work that's going on along Woodward Corridor, that planning commission and DDA are having all that information firsthand.
So it would be required for him to give us written updates on it when it happens?
Well, Commissioner Perry goes and Mr. Petersak will be going and, and I'm sure that Mr. DeCosta will give us reports at the planning commission level or DDA level because Commissioner Perry gives us the report here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Other questions on those issues? Next item is consideration of the update on discussion for improvements to Gainesboro Park. Sherri?
Mayor, I was asked to give an update on discussions that are, been going on for some improvements to Gainesboro Park. I don't have a report, in fact, it's one of the few times I didn't write a memo on it, so I just thought I would share with you what's been happening over the last month or so. And that is about six weeks ago, maybe a little bit longer, I was approached by the foundation about what could we do, what kind of projects is in the works, what would the city like to see done? And this is a conversation that's held on an annual basis, but this time, the president of the foundation, Mr. Cunningham, wanted to know if there was a, a large project that the city could consider. Some of you will recall a memo that I gave the foundation, which I cannot believe it has been seven years, when I looked it up, and it had numerous projects and they were all large projects. And one was the intersection and another one on that list was Gainesboro Park improvements. And at that time, the Recreation Commission had, they had entered into a conversation, a conceptual plan was developed for this huge project at Gainesboro Park, so it tied in. So I mentioned that to Mr. Cunningham and he took that back to the foundation to see if there would be interest and if this was the project that we, that they would want to zero in on with the city. And much to my delight, a week later I got a call and there was unanimous support that this was something the foundation wanted to get behind. I just want to say at this time, special thanks to Amanda Wall, who is a foundation member and on the Recreation Commission, because Amanda has been passionate about seeing something done at Gainesboro Park and she is, she is so enthusiastic about everything and she really kept my spirits up and my hope up that someday there would be something done down there. And as you know, funding is always an issue. This really, the timing of this was nice because the commission, the Recreation Commission had also decided to appoint a subcommittee to look into a park project that would be somewhat affordable and that's the playmakers that you've all been introduced to their project. And they actually went to the foundation, I think this is what spurred the conversation with the foundation to come to the city. They made a presentation for this smaller project in the amount of about thirty to forty thousand dollars. And it was, although the foundation liked the project, it was not something that they wanted to get behind to support because it, it was targeted at a certain age group and for various reasons, plus they had more money and they thought it would be better spent if they could get a larger project. So since that time, I've had a couple of meetings, first with Keith and Amanda and then Mr. Eichelangeli got involved. Then the nice part is we have this older conceptual plan that we can actually phase out, break out portions and the one thing that, which fit within the funding level, and I will just tell you, the foundation is looking at committing about a hundred thousand dollars in the first year and up to two hundred thousand dollars over a three- or four-year period. And it was my idea that during the budget talks, I have a presentation for the city commission to consider as well and then whatever monies were gained from the playmakers efforts would also be donated to part of this. So that's where we are. We, the last time we got together, I invited a Recreation Commission person, a Planning Commission person, historical commission person, Mr. Eichelangeli was there, the foundation and me and Mr. Petersak. What's going to happen is some more talk about what the needs would be, what it looks like so far, is some kind of outdoor pavilion on, on a larger scale than a pavilion that you think of for a backyard. And it's the amenities that, you know, we have to look at and see what would be most appropriate. It would be in keeping with the original conceptual plan, but it would be scaled back. We are so far looking at about a five hundred thousand dollar improvement. I want to make sure that, or I'm hoping to be able to include the plans that the Recreation Subcommittee has endorsed and would like to see as part of this. This would certainly be some, it would be a major, one thing also that will be addressed, and I know this is something Commissioner Perry and I have talked, are available restrooms so that when we have events at the park and we have sports at the park, there would be restrooms available. So it's really in the early, early discussion phase and I think after we have our budget meeting, then we will have a better direction and know exactly what kind of funding we can develop. So it's pretty exciting. There are many, many ideas out there that I haven't even been able to share with you yet, but I think for the first time that it's very real that something could happen.
And examples of the results of when the foundation decides to embrace an idea like this are Stevenson Park?
Oh, yes.
And the medians on Woodward Avenue.
And Memorial Park.
Memorial Park.
It was a three-year dedicated funding for that.
Questions?
Mayor Costelli and Sherri, I am very excited that we're looking at Gainesboro Park. It has been something from day one when, you know, when I was knocking on doors through, you know, when I was elected, the people have been very much, they love Gainesboro Park and I think I have to take blame because I don't think I have communicated well enough what sort of their goals for the park are because they, they love the park as it is. They love, I mean, it is the city's biggest play park and it is, it's, you know, we have a lot of homes that have small backyards and it is the one and only safe place to really go run and play soccer, to throw baseballs, to play football, and it's right adjacent to all of the kids' equipment and things like that. So it is this perfect, I mean, it's a park and I think a lot of the things and I, you know, if I have not communicated these, these desires of sort of the community, what I'm hearing from parents and other community members is they don't want to lose this play park. I know, I took, I brought a couple copies of the...
The old plan?
Of the plan.
Yeah.
And is, it's an old plan, you said?
This is, this is from, this was pulled off the old plan and I think this is probably one of its tail down, yeah.
So if you look at this, you know, and actually I wrote something down because I want to be very sort of clear with some of this, is, you know, Gainesboro is the largest play park in the city and it serves successfully as the primary green and civic space for the residents of the city. While many of our homes have smaller lots, this park serves as a sort of an extended backyard for our residents. Gainesboro is where Pleasant Ridge families come to play. They play soccer, frisbee, football, baseball, they swing, they play on the playground equipment. This is a safe and open space for families to run and play and for kids to play with their friends and for kids to play with their neighbors. The area, theory of Gainesboro that we're discussing...
Sorry?
That's okay. The area of Gainesboro that you, that we are discussing repurposing, which is the area between Devonshire, the parking lot, and the tennis courts, is roughly four-fifths of an acre, of an acre, which is about thirty-five thousand square feet of space, constrained by very awkward dimensions because of the railroad tracks and the houses and things like that. Now, as comparison, the Roosevelt School Playground is about nineteen thousand square feet and the Coolidge School Playground, which is on Bermuda, is about an acre, which is forty-three thousand square feet. So this falls somewhere in between. So we're basically dealing with an area that we, that we're looking at repurposing that is about the size of an elementary school playground and that's it. My concern is shoehorning in a pavilion into the Gainesboro green space will compromise its usefulness as a play space for kids and the facility will only be able to be used, you know, an amphitheater-type facility or pavilion would only be able to be used pretty much May through September, maybe October, instead of year-round, how it is now. And if you look at these plans also, a full quarter of these plans of the park where there's a playground and grass now, becomes a parking lot. Now, the parking lot would not be utilized very often. It also doesn't do anything to alleviate our DDA parking situation at all. It just adds a parking lot. One of, you know, and that is also taking out mature trees and very popular swing sets that, even though they're very old, they are very popular. I'm not sure this is a trade-off that the residents would really want to make. Now, if we look at the 2006, Scott just sent me the 2006 Master Plan for Parks, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And it laid out incremental, incremental program, an incremental program to maintain, to maintain, repair, and develop this area that are perfectly suited to the needs of the residents who frequent that park. This plan has an additional feature of a walking path that would make the park even more usable. We paid to develop this master plan, is this the one that was done seven years ago?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And base, and it was based on a survey of residents' needs. And it appears we have done nothing really to implement this, even as far as we haven't taken out the broken rusty grills. And, you know, that's been over seven years. And so my concern is rushing forward with a plan without stepping back to assess needs, assessing needs by updating a master plan with a new survey, to consider this new structure and the question of that use for the park. In the meantime, we should certainly provide immediate improvements to the park, you know, giving it a bit of attention, like taking out the grills and making sure, and trying to get the bathrooms accessible. But the park, you know, our, that park has such limited land use. And when you look at this, there's very, you know, I went through, and I should have actually colored it in, but I was looking at what green space would be left, and there really would not be any. It would become a non, it would not have usable green space besides a very small island, which is actually a play area, which is actually smaller than the parking lot. This, this park is limited land area, so the space must be used in a manner that supports flexible use for multiple user-defined activities. The active and passive park improvements and amenities should be suitable to day-to-day use to support the park's primary role as the everyday recreation and civic space for residents. And now, so my question is, are there, are we looking at, are there other parks we're modeling this after, or this kind of a pavilion?
Can I have an inject a question first?
Oh, please, I'm sorry.
Are we about to embark on another master plan questionnaire?
Yes, for both Recreation and the city's master plan.
Which was scheduled to be done in the next year, correct?
This year.
Okay.
Right. And, and the process that we're going through right now is a needs and assessment, it's sort of a focus group kind of thing. I'm sorry that you, that you follow this plan. This is really like a coloring book of a piece of that plan to say, here's the area, let's play around with it, let's see what be, what would be appropriate. Much of this is green space, you can't see that here. And some of this has been completely eliminated. So this really shouldn't even be shared. It's, it's not accurate, it's not, it's not a realistic view of what this group has even talked about yet. So I understand your concerns. I understand too, that the feedback I have had over the last many, many years, probably prior to when the pool was built, was, when is the city going to make some investment and some real improvements at Gainesboro Park? The fence is probably one of the biggest things we've ever had to deal with. And, and as part of the big plan, that old DPW yard was something that was going to be demolished and created. But absolutely, there, the walking paths were part of this big plan also, which was north of that and part of that. So I just don't want you to base, I don't want you to make any decision or formulate any even concerns at this point until I'm able to give you some accurate information.
And before you're doing that, we'll have the questionnaires going out and the questionnaires coming back. And just as a matter of historical perspective, there may have been a survey in 2007. And people might remember that around 2008 or 2009, the accounting went into the proverbial toilet. And so there we are.
Well, and the, you know, you look at the survey that went out then and the questions that were asked, you know, a lot of that information is in here. And, you know, nothing like this was approached in that survey. I mean, it was very much about things, well, you talked about picnic pavilion, but that is not, a picnic pavilion I envisioned is something that's like a simple structure, which could work wonderful for an entertainment venue as well. But it's something that would, you know, probably be able to just sit over here and not interfere with this play.
But this can be used as, I mean, the vision is.
Right.
I don't even, I don't even want to refer to this, because...
Okay.
But the vision is that it could be used as a picnic, family reunion kind of structure. And, and the, the idea is, you know, if you have fifty thousand dollars, then you're going to build something that's going to cost fifty thousand dollars. But if you have two hundred thousand or three hundred thousand or more, then you want to build something that's going to accommodate and satisfy the residents of Pleasant Ridge, you know, that would be beautiful and would be usable, and maybe it would be something year-round.
Right.
Could I, could I just add something to this? Are we jumping the gun here?
Yeah.
Are we getting ahead of ourselves? I, I thought before you can do any projects, first of all, you got to find out if you even have the funding. And to find out that we're going to be able to have the possibility of funding, now we can look at the consideration of what we're going to do. We're, we're thinking about building this, and we don't even know if we have the money to build one-third of this. I think we're getting ahead of ourselves. I think we're looking at things from a different perspective. I think we need to get the funding in place to find out who's going to commit funds to it, and then we look at what can be done in the park. Especially, it's going to take a while to do this.
Well, and I think the most important question actually is before that, is what do the residents want? What will they use? What, what enhances their lives more? And that, I think, really has to be the question, is a survey has to be done of the residents before a, you know, before we make a plan and determine funding even, is what are the needs of the, what are the needs of the city? And you look, we don't have, I mean, there are no other real play parks in the city. I mean, you look at over, you get to Flynn Field, there's a lot of marshy area over there that gets very wet. And we don't have, you know, these playscapes, if this is anywhere near the plan.
Really, I feel bad talking about this, because the, I, this, you shouldn't even refer to this yet.
Okay.
Like I said, it's like giving a kid a coloring book and saying, okay, well, let's start with this page.
Well, and it's been posted. And I mean, so I'm getting letters, I mean, I have letters from residents who are concerned.
Posted where?
This has been posted?
Yeah, it's at the rec center.
Mayor, if I could.
It's posted to show the, to show the Playmakers, where the Playmakers' new park fits into the park plan that was, that was put out.
It's been posted, that's all I can say.
Right.
No, it should, well...
It's confusing.
Well, if I may, Mayor?
Go ahead.
The initial emphasis of the Playmakers' group did not speak to larger projects, the whole impetus of the Playmakers was in, was in effort to acknowledge, yes, funding is tight in communities, yes, money for recreation is very limited. What can we do on a modest scale to improve the parks in the, in our community, our specific community? What could we do on a modest scale? Through joint projects, including citizen groups, including the Foundation, including Recreation Commission, including the city, including any grant money that was available? A real kind of, okay, we, let's just assume we have no money, how can we raise money to do a, a simple park improvement project? And that is the basis of printing out that. We posted it at the Hayride, we posted it at the rec center. And the intention was to get people excited about the opportunity to add two very simple play items in Gainesboro Park. A little swing and a climbing element. That's all the Playmakers really were interested in. So this larger project that now is potentially on the horizon, you know, the Playmakers were never really, that was not on our horizon. We assumed we didn't have any money. And the difficulty was going to be raising the, the, the funds just to fund a smaller, more modest improvement for the kids who don't have the opportunity at Gainesboro to play on the larger play equipment. The, the equipment that was spelled out in the Playmakers' plan was specifically designed for kids who are five and under. Kids five and under do not have any play opportunities at Gainesboro Park, because the play structure that's currently there is designed for older kids. The, the heights are higher, you know, you get your five, I had three five-year-olds down there, and it's just, you know, you walk around like this, hoping they don't, you know, fall out of the thing. The idea was to, to install a, a age-appropriate element, play element for, for smaller kids. And that's, that's really the, the target that the Playmakers had set for themselves. That was where Scott had, and Mr. Eichelangeli had provided that document.
This document?
Right.
Not this side?
No, both of those.
I don't think I remember seeing this part. I, I just show where it would be in location to the, to the conceptual plan.
Yeah, I didn't, I can tell you, I didn't draw that.
No, no. I do remember seeing that.
Right. But it was provided to me, and Mr. Eichelangeli took the time to devise that plan. He really worked with the Playmakers to really kind of envision how that would fit into the, to the current structure. All this amphitheater discussion has really just taken off in the last few weeks and was not at all part of the initial Playmakers' idea. So when those documents were developed, it was a very modest plan, very modest goals, and an attempt just to get people to get excited about that project and raise some money. That's all those documents were for.
And they were good, and they were useful tools. The, the goal of that committee was to raise, I think, forty thousand dollars by May first, if I recall, because you and I have a bet.
But no, well, let's get clear, on the record, it's not, I don't have, we don't have to raise forty grand, we have to raise ten grand.
Yes, you have to raise...
Not me, the Playmakers need to raise ten grand.
In any event, I, you know, I met with that, your committee a couple of times, because I, you know, it was a great effort, great mission. Unfortunately, one component was dependent on whether or not the Foundation was going to donate to it in the amount of ten thousand dollars. That wasn't going to happen. And, but the good thing to come out of that was the conversation that was held at the Foundation level, I think, generated more conversation about what can we do at Gainesboro Park? I was asked to report, I really don't even have anything to report, because this is at such an early stage. I'm excited about it. It certainly is not meant to diminish the, the quality of the project that you, you were talking about here. And it was actually something that from the very beginning conversation with the Foundation when I had it was, you know, if possible, I want to make sure that at least this part of the project is incorporated into the first phase. But I think, you know, the reality is right now where we are, you have fifteen hundred dollars or something, and I don't know how much you have. About that?
Not ten, we can agree on we don't have ten.
Correct. And so there was some concern about, well, how can we make this happen? Part of my job is to find ways to make things happen. And that's what I'm just trying to do here.
Well, all I'm saying is that the scope was, was very modest, and that was the initial scope of the Playmakers' idea. And so any kind of conversation regarding expanding that scope, I'm excited about, and I want to participate in those conversations. And thinking about what could be is always exciting. But I think I'm kind of cautious of, okay, let's step back, like Commissioner Ravino said, you know, let's determine funding, let's determine what we really have here, let's determine, like Commissioner Perry said, let's determine citizen, what the citizens would like to see, and, and go forward on there, so...
But at this point in time, we have the expressed interest of the most sustaining funding unit other than taxes that the city of Pleasant Ridge has ever had or ever will have. And we already have scheduled doing the Recreation Master Plan and the Master Plan surveys and update of those documents. So I don't understand what the controversy is. Those, that input will be back before anything happens. And right now, we have a, you know, the strongest commitment we have to funding that we'll ever have, in getting the Foundation to put themselves behind a major project. And when they put themselves behind a major project, they deliver the funding and they deliver the project. Maybe this conversation is premature, and the only reason it was put on the agenda is that Sherri was asked to put it on the agenda. She would have preferred to put it on an agenda where she had something more developed to present. So is that a fair statement, Sherri?
Yes, and I guess, I mean, the, the, I, should I say no to the Foundation, we're not interested? They're not interested in taking out fireplaces.
It's quite...
Absolutely not. Well, so I think that that is not, I think the Foundation is an amazing funding establishment. They are just an incredible organization. But what they do is they react to projects that are brought to them. And if this is brought to them, that's what they're reacting to. And so what we want to do is make sure we're bringing projects to them that are things that the people want.
What was brought to them was improving Gainesboro Park. What was not brought to them, am I wrong, Sherri, was the drawing on the plan, everything hushed and granted. What was brought to them?
Right. What was brought to, well, they came to me first of all, and they were given a list of projects that the city and City Commission and residents had seen a number of years ago and loved it. And so the idea was to break out that, let's phase it out, let's start this project finally, and see what we can get done. They have a statement and criteria that you have to meet in order for them to fund a project. So I don't want you to think that I went to the Foundation, as I have many, many times over the years, with a specific project outlined, with this in hand, saying, this is what I would like you to fund. When he said, I have a chunk of money that we would like to dedicate, and possibly, I said to, I said to him, just as in the past, would you be willing to do so in the next several years? And he said, yes. So, you know, if you don't want me to continue these talks, I won't continue.
Absolutely, we want you to continue them. But I think after the, the survey is done, and we find out, you know, we make sure that we're presenting good options, or I, you know, actually, Mr. Metzger can probably speak to how a survey is done better than I can. But, you know, providing options and things to the, to the residents that, that are giving them options, because, you know, I'll be honest, the information I heard, that I have heard from specific people, was that this project was a little more down the road. Like, we are really, this is sort of...
I wouldn't believe half of what you hear.
I don't know what specific people you're talking about, nor do I know what the statistical variability of that input is. It's always, I hear from people.
We'll just say it's anecdotal, because I don't want to throw anyone under the bus, but...
But we all, from other, we all hear from people, you know I do too.
Right.
And probably every comment that you've had on this, I've had comments on the other way. But trust, I can tell you, Commissioner Perry, with all sincerity, this has gone nowhere other than conversations.
That's great.
And we rely on surveys that we have done in the past. So yes, I think you're right, it's time, we know we're going to do surveys. But to put this on hold...
Well, to start with...
I mean, is that what?
To start with what you want to do, is you want the Foundation to get on board with the project and start putting the money on hold. Because while the plan is being developed, because otherwise, the money might be spent on other things, a little bit here, a little bit there.
Well, plus, they're only making thirty thousand a year now. So I mean, for them to commit to a project, this isn't a one-year commitment for them, correct? This is a five-year...
Three to five, I guess.
Three to five years.
I mean, my concern is, I, it sounds like we're slightly putting the project ahead of, if you're, if you're, it's going to be a blanket, whatever's deter, you know, it's going to be a statement, whatever's determined by the survey of residents, that Gainesboro Park should become, we're going to fund projects for that? I mean, I don't know that, that doesn't seem how the Foundation really works. And I mean, the Foundation isn't really the important part of this conversation as much as, what is the use of this park? And right now, it is the most utilized park in the city.
Well, probably the pool is, but...
Well, probably after the pool. It's the actual pool, which is used from May 31st through, what is it, September 14th? Uh, September first. So this is, you know, but you can't run in the, in the pool. I've gotten yelled at before, so. So anyway, so I'm glad, actually, I mean, 'cause I don't wanna, we're going around in circles now, I just wanted to make sure. My concern was, I was hearing, this project, and we're gonna start-
We're, we're not sure who you heard it from. You didn't hear from me, you didn't hear from, uh, Sherry.
No.
Didn't hear it from the city commission. I mean, the city commission makes those final decisions, I don't know anyone in the city commission that's heard it to you. I mean, I'm not trying to be-
I am saying, go ahead.
That's not, to me, it's up to them.
Where did you hear this project was ago?
I have heard-
Well, she's not gonna name specific people.
No.
Well, whoever told you that was wrong.
Okay.
They were wrong.
I do have one question. Now, where did this, if, if we're talking about master plans, so where did this, and I understand that there's a need for this in the park, so this project that the Recreation Commission is doing, that they're looking at, that, uh, Jason, it, was that also part of the master plan?
No. You mean the one seven years ago or whatever?
Yes.
No. There were other components.
Right. So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Jay, briefly.
Jay Formis, the man in Maplefield, um, I'll speak as a member of the Recreation Commission. Um, I have to say, this project is what was presented to us at the last meeting. It would be an outdoor pavilion slash amphitheater. That was clearly stated. That was what the, the foundation wanted to get behind as a specific project, not necessarily open to survey results.
Somebody from the foundation came there and presented it to you?
Well, that was at a, at the coffee. That was discussed. And then at a rec- commission meeting, this was discussed as the project. So there was no ambiguity there. This was what was decided, or discussed, I should say. Um, it wasn't, we'll do a survey and see-
Discuss and decide, discuss and decide are two different things. Coffee houses and city commission meetings are two different things.
I just wanted to be clear, though, that at the rec. commission meeting, this is the project that was discussed by Scott, that brought up, and we all heard about it. And it was, this is gonna happen this year, is what it said.
I want to clarify something right now, though, because I look like I'm giving bad information. This is not an accurate portrayal of the project that's been discussed by the foundation and the other people who attended those meetings. The concept and the vision is for a structure, an outdoor pavilion structure. I wanna make sure everybody heard that at the beginning of my talks. But this does not represent what might be. But yes, that is what the focus of the conversation is on.
So, and I'm sorry, 'cause I, now I'm real confused. So I mean, so Recreation Director went to the Recreation Commission and said that they were going to-
He shared an update, just like I'm doing right now.
And, and this season is when the target was. So I didn't hear about surveys and all that kinda stuff at that time. It sounds like that's gonna take more time. So that doesn't go with what I heard at the rec. commission meeting, that's all. I'll make sure I state that.
Thank you. Sherry?
Well, we've talked about the surveys, um, at the planning commission level and I think it was in a memo three or four months ago about both the planning commission, I mean, both the master plan survey and the recreation master plan survey needed updating and, um, I suggested that they be done at the same time, it would be cost-effective.
Well, it's, if I made a mistake, I, it's, it's quite obvious that there's a lot of misinformation here and if, and if, if this was a perception perceived by the Recreation Commission, then I can see Anne's concerns, but I, I, I gotta tell you, no matter if it's Jason's project or if it's Recreation Commission's project they're going on now, if we're gonna do something over on the east side, I wholeheartedly agree that there must be a survey done, the Recreation Commission master plan must be updated before we do anything.
I agree.
If it's a thirty thousand dollar project, if it's a two hundred thousand dollar project-
That's already done, that's already-
And I understand it, and I'm not knocking it, I'm just saying I wanna make it very clear that I won't, I won't support anything other than that, in that way.
Scott? Um, the, the update that was given at the Recreation Commission was really to, for a major update about the Playmakers and, and what, what direction that project was going, that the foundation wasn't gonna give the ten thousand dollars, they were interested in giving a larger sum of money. The city would look at possibly contributing a larger sum of money toward, um, this outdoor pavilion type of project. The picture that's on that is a whole larger project, which I think a number of you had seen seven years ago or five years ago, that includes a larger building and getting rid of the DBW and making, revamping the whole park. When, when John does those plans, he has, he lays everything in so it fits of what a larger type plan is, because when you're doing things in phases, it has to jigsaw together. So, um, that's why you see some of those outlines, but, um, when it was discussed, that's what, that's a project that was discussed, was an outdoor type pavilion. Now, whether that's set in stone, it wasn't, that wasn't the case. I, I prefaced everything by saying, this has to go to the city commission, this has to go to the city commission, I said it a number of times, so, um, at the same, at the same point, um, it's, that's what was, that's what was said, we just, we just wanted to make sure that was clear.
A question too, so now, we have a project that someone's been doing fundraising for and that is looking for funding, that is not on the master plan, that is not approved by the city commission, I mean, how could it go even that far?
They were just in the, they were, had conceptual plan, just like anything else, to try to raise some funds as a foundation for those funds, and they were gonna have to come and ask the city for those funds. So there was, that's, that project was no, no farther along than the project we're talking about right now. Other than that, to be able to do something, you have to drop some plans, you have to have something to show, to show people or to even remotely say, hey, this is the idea, this is something that we're gonna be able to do.
Except that project raised money from people with no certainty that the project was even approved.
Exactly, exactly. And at the same point, I, my, my take of the Recreation Commission meeting was that all the members of the Recreation Commission was, were in favor of moving forward some improvements at Gainsborough Park. They, they seemed excited about it and, um, that's the way that I took the discussion, so.
I, 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 I'm not trying to make an issue here, it's just, it's just concerning that, and I, I appreciate your input, you've always-
Sure.
Scott, I'm really glad this all came up tonight, 'cause it clarifies a lot of things. And I agree, just like Commissioner Bushy, once we get the, the survey done and we know exactly what's gonna go on the park, then this body can determine moving forward and getting some, because Gainsborough Park, that's worked on, and I really see it moving forward. Everything I understood had nothing to do with that plan, so, I'm sorry that got around and it was disinterpreted of what's, what the plans are. And, but, we brought this up tonight to clarify. Okay. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. Uh, thank you. Yeah, just, so I could clarify, um, I, I am a big fan of the foundation, I think they're one of the most, uh, they're a bedrock to this community and I think they, uh, you know, uh, do many great things and I don't want my, um, cautiousness to be interpreted as anything that's against, uh, the foundation or their attempts to improve the quality of life in this community. I also wanna say that working with Scott on the Playmakers thing has been, um, very rewarding. Um, he's helped, uh, kinda formulate that, he's been very constructive and I don't wanna hit, throw Scott under the bus for the work he's done on this, 'cause I think it's been outstanding and even though, yes, our fundraising is, um, tepid, um, you know-
Embryonic.
Excuse me?
Embryonic.
Uh, I think we're gestating beyond that phase, but-
There's a cornhole tournament to come.
Thank you. Um, but, um, but Scott's done a great job on that and he's provided leadership at the recreation level for that and I, you know, I don't want him to be, to feel like that is, that, that there's any ungratefulness regarding that. And Mr. Echolangely, who really took time out to, to help, you know, a group of people who are not really well-versed on, you know, the, the planning down there, to take us under his wing and, and kinda guide us in this little project. So, uh, at all phases, I think people have been really cooperative and helpful and helping out each other and everyone's goal is to see Gainsborough Park improved and I think if we all kinda keep that as, uh, you know, a goal, yes, we may have questions and yes, we may, you know, look for, um, answers to those questions and, and see what would be the best fit for Gainsborough, but I think we can all agree that, uh, you know, we'd like to see Gainsborough Park improved. So, thank you, Mayor.
Anything else on the staff?
Can, can I make a motion, um, Mayor Costelli? I'd like to make a motion to allocate funding for up to the amount of ten thousand dollars for the preparation of an updated Parks and Recreation Master Plan that complies with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources guidelines for the Department of Community Park, Recreation, Open Space and Greenway Plans. The public input process shall include a public survey mailed or online and collaboration sessions to gain public, uh, to gain community input and to build consensus towards a shared vision for the future development of the city's parks and recreation facilities.
Agreeing that you can make a motion and then hearing the motion, I do not agree that that motion is appropriate tonight. It's not on the agenda, it's, uh, it's allocating money. If you wanna suggest it be put on the agenda for next month-
Okay.
-that would be fine, but to, to have a motion to allocate money on the agenda item as an update or discussion for improvements, I don't think would be proper.
Okay.
And also, I would like to, if we're gonna go that route, then I'd like to have actually our, John come in and actually fine-tune that to the point where it's-
Sure.
-a little bit, but I have, I have no problem with it, I, I would support that amphitheles.
At the proper time.
At the proper time and in a proper, in a proper way.
With open discussion, sure.
And proper notice to the public.
And, yes, thank you.
City Manager's Report.
Um, I will just tell you, the daddy-daughter dance will be held this Friday at six-thirty to eight p.m.
I guess that technicality, you withdraw the motion.
I withdraw the motion.
Thank you.
Probably was seconded.
Okay.
So, um, um, you probably know, assessment notices were mailed to all properties. The city overall had an increase of about six percent. Um, I think it was ten percent, uh, west of Woodward and about three percent east of Woodward, so it was really great news for the city. And, um, the foundation, I will tell you, as I am required to do, is that the foundation will be applying for a liquor license for its annual auction. I think they're working on a casino night and the date for that is May seventeenth and eighteen. And then finally, on March seventh, is a fifty-plus club, but feel free to come. We have a superstar performing and, uh, it's the Boogie Woogie Kid. He starts at six o'clock and you don't wanna miss that concert. Performed by Matthew Ball.
Are they selling CDs?
In the lobby.
And t-shirts. Oh, yeah.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Uh, since our last meeting, has anybody retired?
Oh, my goodness, yes. Um, it was bittersweet. We said fairly well to Sergeant Bunting, he gave us his notice in the required time. He has, um, he was, um, more than pleased to land a job with the Berkeley Public Safety Department and he was sad to leave all of us and we were sad to see him go. But, um, my understanding is the radio was very busy last night, he was working and running plates all night long.
Well, you gave him a great send-off too, that was a very nice-
A two-day retirement.
You did, yes. A two-day retirement and right back to work, so.
Other business.
Um, or Sherry, actually, I wanted to ask you a question. Um, now, the Ferndale Library, I know, has extended a, a invitation to the Huntington Woods Library. Have you talked to them about that at all?
Uh, I think you're talking about the Books and Roses?
Yes.
I almost said Guns and Roses.
The Books and Roses program? You'll remember last year that, um, the city had, um, an art, a piece of art in Stevenson Park, it was a sculpture of a dragon. There was a little bit of controversy around that because unbeknownst to me, I agreed, um, on a date that was in conflict with a scheduled date for the Huntington Woods Library. So this year, thanks to Commissioner Perry, early planning has begun. Um, the date that has been scheduled is April twenty-first, I think, or the actual day of reading. And I am going to meet with, uh, not the library director, but the, um, library, friends of the library in Ferndale and coordinate that, coordinate that program and I will bring it back to the city commission for approval before anything is done.
On the dragon, huh?
Yes.
And, and, and as you know, you and I have a disagreement about the safety of the dragon and we continue to have a disagreement about the safety of the dragon.
So I will push you on in and we'll see if you get hurt. We'll test it.
Other business.
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I know we talked at last meeting, uh, regarding, uh, Royal Oak's attempts to craft a human rights ordinance and the suggestion at the table last month was that we wait until their ordinance, uh, was crafted. Um, they're, they have, uh, since had their first reading of that ordinance and their second reading is planned for March fourth. Um, so I think, um, it would be prudent for us, my position is that we should, uh, initiate the conversations regarding a human rights ordinance for our community. And with that spirit, I, um, prepared a motion, um, I'd like to make a motion to instruct the city attorney to investigate what legal protections against discrimination in housing, employment and public accommodations currently exist for city residents at the local, county, state and federal level and to present his findings to the community at the next city commission meeting to be held on March twelfth, two thousand thirteen at seven-thirty.
Well, again, similar to the other motion, I think that that is a motion committing us to spend money. Um, that again isn't on the agenda, would be appropriate to be on the agenda next month if it's posted, but perhaps a starting point is simply to ask Sherry if she will call the city of Royal Oak and get a copy of their draft ordinance. Uh, and then we can see the ordinance that you want a pattern after what it says and then we can perhaps more, um, accurately define what we want this city attorney to do. Um, as we discussed at the last meeting from my reading of the newspaper article, I had no clue how they were going to define such things as, um, discrimination based upon source of income. And there were a couple of other, um, types of categories that they didn't even know, um, how it's gonna be defined. I had a conversation with Mayor Ellison at the, um, Mayor's Association dinner the day after our last meeting and asked him that question and he said, I don't know. So I would think a starting point is, let's get a copy of what Royal Oak is looking at and then we can decide before spending money on the city attorney, uh, to what degree we want to approach it, because we may look at their definitions and say, we're not even interested in these two categories.
Well, um, with all due respect, uh, Mayor, um, this was an issue I brought up last meeting, it was suggested that we postpone it to this meeting. Um, I took your, uh, advice and postponed it. Um, I think what would be proper is if the city attorney, uh, in the course of his investigation over the course of the next thirty days, was to acquire that ordinance and, uh, present that in March at this, to this governing body. I think that would be wholly appropriate.
Well, I think what would be appropriate is that had you intended to make a motion to have us spending money on the city attorney, that you called the city manager last week and asked her to put that motion on the agenda so that sooner than nine-twenty-two, the rest of us knew that motion was gonna be made to spend that money.
Well, with all due respect, again, um, last month, Commissioner Ravino introduced, uh, a, a motion during other business regarding the water billing. We've established, everyone voted unanimously on that. Um, so I took that as a indication that other business would be an opportunity to introduce motions to initiate action. That's all I intend this to do. I'm not saying anyone who supports this motion is supporting an ordinance, all I'm saying is, I think we need to get the ball rolling on this and the best way to get the ball rolling on this is have our attorney, um, within his abilities, construct, uh, acquire the information regarding Royal Oak and other communities. Now, I'm not an attorney and I don't want, but on the internet, I was able to fill this binder full of, I call it my binder full of rights, and it's full of different communities, Royal Oak included, and we can get into, I have a tab here for Royal Oak, I copied, I went online and got the ordinance and we can go through and see what Royal, if you really have questions, we can go through and see how they define it. It's all, uh, this was all acquired online, all this stuff. So if Mr. Cooper, you know, uh, I, like I said, I'm not an attorney. I just, this was all done with the mouse clicks. So if we had, could have our attorney go through, what is at the- So, if we could have our attorney go through, what is at the federal level, what is at the state level, what is at the county level, what is available at the city level? I think that's wholly within his duties as our city attorney and I think it's reasonable to give him thirty days to report back.
At what expense?
I don't know. Do, he's, he's paid every month, correct?
He bills us on an hourly rate. You wanna pay him on an hourly rate to read that binder and then go review every city, state, and, and other, uh, statute and regulation?
Can pay me?
At what budget level? At what budget level?
Within his duties as attorney, I think it's wholly acceptable for him to compile those.
With his duties as attorney, you got a twenty-five thousand dollar fee, a fifteen thousand dollar fee?
I'm, I'm not trying to be any reasonable, all I'm trying to do is say there's a process that I would like to initiate and this is attempt to do that. If we need to discuss Mr. Cooper's fee, I'm sorry, I guess that I should've put it on the agenda. But I took a cue from last meeting that other business was an opportunity to get the ball rolling. Last week, last month, we did it on the water billing. I would like to see the ball rolling on the human rights ordinance coming out of this meeting.
Getting the ball rolling, instructing the city attorney to provide a copy of the Royal Oak proposed ordinance, which apparently you have and you can simply circulate to us, gets the ball rolling. Instructing the city attorney to engage in a research project and report back to us at the next meeting is different than getting the ball rolling. I have no problem getting the ball rolling, but I disagree with that particular motion. I, I do not think it's appropriate not being on the agenda.
If I may, if I may, Mayor, I'm sorry. Uh, and, and I'm not aware, so, but did they Royal Oak pass theirs?
No, they did not pass it, they've read it.
So, and, and I'm sorry, and I, and I could be totally wrong here, but I thought we were waiting from the pass their ordinance to see what they tripped it down to, or was, was I wrong, Jason? Was I wrong?
Well, I think you could interpret the mayor's instructions from the last meeting as you interpreted, but I interpreted it as, as soon as they have an ordinance presented, that we would proceed.
And I, and my commentary went to letting them do all the work, which goes to, let's see what they adopt.
And I don't wanna get in the, but I, I personally, I, I thought that's what it was, but I.
You maybe recall what the minutes, I thought it was.
I thought it was when they passed that we were gonna let them do all the.
Well, and I appreciate that, Commissioner.
I could be wrong.
And to me, I guess the wording and if we're gonna parse the words here, my only intention is to get the ball rolling. I feel each month we postpone this is we're postponing my inevitable intention to bring a motion before this commission, so.
Well, you know, with all due respect, Ann wanted to have a report on Gainesboro Park on the agenda. She called Sherri, she asked to have it put on the agenda. You have a three-ring binder that's several inches thick. You should've called Ann, uh, called Sherri and said, "I would like to put this on the agenda. This is what I have." Not pulling it out of the briefcase under other business, especially when you have that three-ring binder, it isn't something that just occurred to you under other business. It's something you planned to do. You could've planned it well enough ahead of time to put it on an agenda. There may be people who might've shown up because they saw it on an agenda.
What I would like to do is put it on the agenda so we could have the residents, uh, weigh in on this. That's my intention to, to get system input on this. I feel I'm being stymied by getting the opportunity to put something on the agenda and I thought, thought this was an opportunity to put something on the agenda, plan for next meeting, have it put on the agenda for next meeting, and then invite residents to come in.
Putting it on the agenda at the next meeting and passing a motion under other business asking the city attorney to research everything you asked to research in your motion and report back at the next meeting are two big different things. Start with, we don't even historically use Charlie for a lot of personnel matters.
Would this be something our city manager could do?
This would, this would be something that if we went to council, we would go to our labor council. This would not be something within the purview of any city manager to research all the laws.
Well, if this is gonna be my opportunity, I would just like to say that, um, the only rights right now that, um, protect people based on their sexual orientation, there are none, basically. The only discrimination right on the, uh, state dockets is the Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act of nineteen seventy-seven. And, um, all it protects is discrimination because of, based on religion, race, color, national origin, age, sex, height, weight, familial status, or marital status. Those are only, the only discriminations that are protected at the state level. Um, I think it's proper that municipalities should add, um, sexual orientation to that list of rights that should be protected in employment and housing. So, um, I did that brief mon research. That's all I'm asking our city attorney to do is say, "What does the state law say? What does the federal law say? What can we do here in Pleasant Ridge?" If that is more in line with what, um, our city manager can do, then I guess I misappropriated the task, but, um.
I would suggest that if you already have the draft ordinance from Royal Oak, provide a copy to Sherri and she can circulate it to all of us and we can have discussion of the ordinance at the next meeting of Royal Oak's ordinance.
Well, I'm not withdrawing my motion.
Fine, is there a support?
No support.
Discussion?
Um, Mayor Costelli, one of the reasons that I really, um, feel it's important that we move forward on this is we are falling behind sort of in our region, um, as far as, as adopting this policy. And there is a really interesting, um, I thought, an interesting, uh, just paragraph that the, who is it? I'm sorry, the Municipal Equality Index had put together and I think it was done by Richard Florida, who is a research professor, a global research professor at NYU and a senior editor with The Atlantic. He said, "Cities are in constant competition for business, residents, and employers. A growing body of research has shown that cities that have significant and vibrant gay and lesbian communities have higher levels of income, life satisfaction, housing values, and emotional attachment to their community, as well as higher concentrations of high-tech businesses. Richard Florida's fascinating work on the subject reveals a link between the city's inclusivity and its ability to attract top talent and innovative business." And as we all know, our DDA right now is, you know, we have quite a few vacancies and I think us having the, the best, most inclusive policies that I believe our residents have already fully embraced, even with that, you know, we just need to make it, I think we need to make it an official policy.
So you have a three-ring binder on the topic as well, so I trust that you knew that Mr. Krizak, Commissioner Krizak was gonna bring this up tonight. You called, um, Sherri and asked to have the Gainesboro Park thing put on the ordinance, on the agenda, so everybody looking at the agenda would know that that topic was going to be brought up. I don't understand, you know, why transparent government, when you know, when you're each bringing three-ring binders to meetings, you know you're gonna bring them up. I don't know why that is not appropriate to put on the agenda ahead of time so that people who look for the agenda, for people who wanna have the agenda e-blasted to them, people who wanna go to the webpage to find the agenda, who people have come to Pleasant Ridge, City Hall to find the agenda, why shouldn't they see that on the agenda?
Now, and this is.
I'm not debating the merits of the ordinance.
No, and I understand that.
I'm debating what is proper governmental policy.
Right, which, to be fair, I think this is.
This could be apple pie and I was still object.
Right, and we brought this up last month, however, and so, of course, I have been looking into it and trying to find out so that I understand why this is so important and what is lacking. But, you know, as we did last month, and I was kicking myself for a month and still, that I didn't ask for the water bill motion to be tabled so that we could have it as an agenda item and have a discussion about it because I didn't think through all the repercussions with, you know, and I, I know I can't do that quickly, um, at the table, is think through all the repercussions on that. Now, that is a very, that even was a very different motion, which has much larger implications that we will not be making any motion, uh, action on changing water bills if that ends up what it's being. I know there are many discussions still going on, but if that vote that we took, we would not be making any changes to water bills for a whole nother season. And that has a very big financial implication, maybe not to the city, but to the residents. And I was, and I'm, I'm not saying it's your fault that I voted wrong or that I didn't say, "You know what, let's table that vote." But this does not have a financial, I mean, and I understand your concern about the financial implication for the lawyer to do the research, but I don't see where it has any deeper consequences or that it is, I mean, it's something that was brought up last month and, you know what, and some of it is figuring out also the different, uh, protocol that might be more appropriate and what is the best way. But I'll be honest, the agenda was not on the website as of yesterday. And so while I try and set it out every time.
It's been there since Thursday afternoon. I got a verification from our web developer.
Okay, then I, then I'm mistaken because I went on there to try and pull it off and it was not there. Maybe I have to use Foxfire again, but the, when I went on there to look for it, I did not see it, and so that's my fault if it was there. But the, I mean, I think, you know, it's, I, I think we all maybe have certain protocol things we could learn, but sometimes bringing these topics up for good discussion is, I mean, it, it happens in other business frequently.
Well, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I, I just wanna go back to one of your comments regarding the water bill commission. You stated just now that if, the reason we made the motion was to get the discussion on the water bill before we could have it resolved immediately, if, 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 was that not what it was?
That was exactly, there was no expenditure of funds to be done.
I mean, I don't, once again, don't leave, don't throw misleading information. I mean, I, 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 and, and as far as this goes, I mean, and, and I could be totally, excuse me.
No, let's address that point first because I am not putting forward misleading information.
Well, you just told people that we went, we made a very clear and present that we wanted to go ahead and resolve the water bill as quick as possible, and so that's why we're working on a budget workshop, an individual meeting, to, to get something in ballot language for we could get that particular issue resolved. So, if, if I'm misunderstanding, maybe I'm wrong in it because I thought we were trying to get this done before we could have this on November election.
About, so that's a whole season later.
Yeah, but this is not an issue that we should resolve here. This is an issue that the citizens of this community should resolve.
Well, that's, you know, that was the conversation we should've had last, last month.
Well, we've been delaying with trying to go with alternative scenarios.
Well, that was, we were, um, that is the, what the vote was, was talking about should the citizens resolve this versus can the commission resolve this? Now, and, and that's great that that is your vote and that's your perspective.
No, it's great that the citizens make the determination on this issue as far as the water bill.
Right, and that is your vote, which is wonderful.
What did you vote on that?
I voted yes, and what I am saying, what I'm saying is I wish I had had the opportunity to see this.
So you don't want the citizens to vote on that issue?
Jerry, I am not making, Commissioner Bushy, I am not making that assertion. What I'm saying is I would've liked, if I had had the presence of mind to ask for us to delay that vote so that we could have put that on the agenda so I could've thought through all the repercussions of that.
Oh, okay.
If I may, Mayor, um, last month, I contacted Sherri, 'cause I wanna, I, I don't wanna do this inappropriately, I wanna do it above board and follow processes, and I suggested a motion last month, right? Suggested bringing it up, and I was told bring it up in other business, right?
That's correct.
So, I, I guess I do need guidance and I appreciate the guidance on this and I don't wanna be, uh, you know, not, I don't wanna be not transparent, um, but I did wanna, I felt like it was delayed last month. I feel it's gonna be delayed this month. All I'm trying to do is just get some traction going so we can have a vote before this governing body. That's my only intention.
If I may.
Go ahead, please.
As, and as really, I'm addressing this just as part of training. Anytime you have information like these, these binders, I don't even know what's in them, but you told me what's in them. If that's something that you're gonna want to discuss with all of the city commission the next time and any future time, please give me a copy. I can distribute it to all members of the city commission, either put it in a memo or if it's an agenda item, I'll put it in the packet. And that's just appropriate and that's just, you know, it isn't good to have two commissioners that have had conversations about a topic and the other three are in the dark and bingo, it comes up, and you know how that is.
And then the other three get accused of delaying when they've been ambushed in nine twenty-two.
Well, and I wanna talk about the delay because we had a conversation about the human rights ordinance and it was because it was an article in the paper that Royal Oak was looking at it. And there have been several articles in the paper. In fact, one of the articles was that they had tabled it and then they took it up at their next meeting. I can tell you, I don't know if he wants me to share it, but there is great support for human rights ordinance that may be appropriate for the city of Pleasant Ridge. That's unusual because the city of Pleasant Ridge, historically, does not necessarily deal with bigger issues. And this is an ordinance that you asked specifically. At the, at the table last month, that was not a delay. The idea was if we have a neighboring community whose attorney is already working on this, we know that they're going to develop something that's modeled probably somewhat like Huntington Woods and Ferndale, let's take a look at it. Let's let their group of city attorneys go through this, let them hash it out, and then once they have something final, and it won't be final until they adopt it, then let's get a copy of it. Then we'll have our attorneys take a look at it and we'll model what's best for Pleasant Ridge from that. And the, the suggestion was really a financial one. It wasn't any, any motive to delay the issue. And I know it sometimes seems like, and government does move slow sometimes, it takes forever sometimes, but this is just the best process. It gives you opportunity not only to get the word out, but to do further research. Tonight's motion, because it's expending money, it, it, my understanding, it would not be appropriate and that would be the city attorney's advice to, to all of you. However, all you have to do is say, "I would like this added to the agenda next month" so that we can discuss it further. You know I'm gonna research that and I'm gonna give you everything I can give you prior to that meeting. So I, you know, I feel like maybe you were offended that this was something that's being deliberately delayed and that was not my take on it and I would tell you one-on-one that's.
And in the meantime, that would give you time to get an assessment as to what the cost of what was initially asked for in that motion would be and what might be a way of reducing those costs.
Commissioner Krizak, if you make a motion to have it put on the next agenda, I'd be more than happy to support that. But to bring it up tonight and expend funds, you just can't do that. It's inappropriate, it hasn't been advertised.
Mr. Cooper, do you think we can?
We do have a motion on the table.
Mr. Cooper, is this motion appropriately before us or not?
My understanding that it's not appropriate before us.
Is there a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Is there support?
I'll support it.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Krizak?
No.
Commissioner Perry?
No.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, it is tabled. Sherri, would you put the, uh, either the motion or work with Commissioner Krizak on the wording of a motion on the next month's agenda?
Yes.
In the meantime, would you determine whether, um, Mr. Cooper the elder or Mr. Lang would be the more appropriate attorney to discuss this with and try to get, uh, some type of ballpark as far as, uh, cost and, and maybe a feel for when Royal Oak's gonna be acting on this and where that stands?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Any other other business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Someone.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
To adjourn.